I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Housing Authority. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Agency members Ramirez,
Here.
Rios,
Valencia,
Vice Chair Perez,
Here.
Mayor Ayala,
Here.
And Agency Member Hernandez.
Here.
There's three consent items for consideration as there are a motion to approve the consent counter as presented.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Agency members Ramirez,
Aye.
Rios, Valencia, Hernandez.
I abstain, item 68987.
Vice Chair Perez,
Aye.
And Chair Ayala.
Aye. Is there a Community Development Director report?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any oral communications, anybody wanting to speak on the Housing Authority? The audience?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, then we're adjourned. The regular meeting of Norwalk City Council is now called to order. We're going to have our invocation and pledge. This evening, we're honored to welcome Pastor Michael Gutierrez from Redeemer Covenant Church, also known as Hope City Church, who will lead us in prayer. Michael has been serving for over seven years in our Norwalk community. His biggest inspiration comes from sharing the good news and have others experience the love of Jesus through community outreach. His hobbies include family time and watching sports. Following the invocation, we are joined by Sebastian Munoz, an incoming seventh grader from Lake Center Middle School, who will lead us in the flag salute. Sebastian enjoys playing video games and loves to collect Pokemon cards. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone to please stand as we begin with the invocation and flag salute. And afterwards, Pastor Michael and Sebastian, please stay up in the front with us so we can grab a photograph.
Would you pray with me? Dear God, thank you. Thank you for this great city of Norwalk. God, thank you for all the pieces that make this city what it is. God, thank you for our council who diligently seeks to do best for our community. Thank you for the first responders who serve our community tirelessly, day in and day out, protecting our community. Thank you for all the city staff. Thank you for the schools. Thank you for the churches in our community, God. God, I pray tonight would be a night of unity, God. I pray for unity in this room, that all people in this room would come together to do what's best for our community, God, for the community of Norwalk. I pray for the council, Lord, that you would bless them with wisdom and discernment on what they need to decide and what they need to plan tonight, God, that they would work well together and be a unified front, God, seeking to do what's truly best for the residents here, God. God, I pray that you would be here tonight, that you would be present, that you would be guiding each step of the way so that the city would come to glorify you and honor you in all things.
Sebastian? There he is.
Please put your hand over your heart. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, Pastor Sebastian, please come forward. Okay, City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmembers Ramirez,
Here.
Rios,
Here.
Valencia, Vice Mayor Perez,
Here.
And Mayor Ayala.
Here. What we're going to do is we're going to go directly to special presentations so we can recognize Team Norwalk tonight. And tonight, City Norwalk proudly recognizes Team Norwalk for their participation in the 2025 Special Olympics Southern California Summer Games. Special Olympics provides athletes with intellectual abilities and opportunity to grow through sports, friendship, and inclusion. Our athletes trained through the city's adaptive program, Adaptive Recreation Program, and competed in events at Cal State Long Beach, showing remarkable dedication and spirit. And I actually attended it myself, and I was really impressed by all you athletes. You got, everybody was awesome. It's just really impressive. It's something I encourage everybody to get the opportunity to do it, is to go support Team Norwalk at this event, because, let me tell you, you'll really enjoy it. And of course, that wouldn't be possible without the amazing coaches and recreation leaders, and we thank them to my night for guiding and encouraging our athletes each step of the way. Let's give a big round of applause to Team Norwalk. I would, I would like to introduce City Mayor Hesus Gomez to help announce our coaches and participants. Council?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are recognizing the Norwalk Special Olympics 2025 athletes and coaches. As I read each name, we invite those who are present to come forward and find your place near the front. And I'm going to read them in alphabetical order because you're all winners tonight. Philip Dominguez. Alfredo Garcia. Adam Guerra. Tony Hernandez. Lupita Herrera. Byron Kelly. Alejandro Luna. Christopher Maure. Jeremy Nakom. Jennifer Palacios. Andres Paredia. Robert Rosales. Jonathan Smith. Walter Voe. Louis Velasquez. And we'd also like to recognize the coaches who supported and guided these athletes through the season, and they're all champions tonight. Melanie Camarena. Robert Correa. Brian Duarte. Daniel Gonzalez. Amber Morales. Laura Martin. Robert Pulido. And Eric Solis. Congratulations to all of you, coaches, who have made all of these athletes winners. Thank you very much.
Also now, yeah, I got it. Melanie? Melanie? Let me, let me read one. Okay, and each of these certificates are for coaching and mentoring athletes through the city's Adaptive Recreation Program and 2025 Special Olympics Southern California. Your commitment to inclusion, teamwork, and community empowerment has uplifted countless athletes and inspired the Norwalk community. Thank you very much, coaches and mentors. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Perez for the next few minutes, and I will be back.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Can we have a closed session report, please, Arnold?
Yes, thank you very much. We, record should reflect that the City Council, with all five members being present, recessed into closed session for the discussion of items that are listed on the agenda, one through five, that the City Council received a briefing on those items, that there was no item that requires, that there was action taken that requires to be reported at this time in open session, and that direction was provided on the various items that were discussed in closed session. Madam Vice Mayor, that concludes my report from closed session. It is appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting at this time.
Thank you so much, Arnold. Moving on to council comments, tonight, we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Ramirez. Rick?
Sure, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Wasn't sure if we did roll call? We did? Where was I? Did I fall asleep? I didn't.
Why don't we do roll call again?
We did it for the Housing Authority. I just want to make sure we, you know.
We'll do it again, even though the mayor's now stepped out.
Okay, he's here.
Councilmembers Ramirez,
Here.
Rios,
Here.
Valencia,
Here.
Vice Mayor Perez,
Here.
Mayor Ayala, we know he's here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Rick.
I just have a few comments. One, I want to commend our park and rec staff, as well as our public services, and all city employees that put an amazing Independence Day celebration at the new location at Holyfield Park. Well-attended, well-organized. It looked like the community had a really amazing and fun time. So I want to commend staff for their outstanding work, as well as, you know, every staff, public safety, our sheriff's department personnel, anyone and everyone that was involved. Great attendance. Also like to bring up a topic, and I don't know where we're at on this, I want to direct staff to maybe bring back to council report on the 105 Studebaker exit issue. I know we had a recent incident as early as June 26, I believe. I'm not quite sure what the status is of that exit, where we're at. But also to bring back some ideas with that parcel or that development, potential development, where these cars are, I think it's a, somehow it's a, it's a phenomenon, right? It's a magnet for these cars that keep plowing into that building, right? So I want to see staff develop a plan of what we're, what we propose to do with future development. I know in the previous, the planning commissioner denied an applicant to establish a business across the street, but we're allowing development on that impact area. So I want to know where we're at on it. I know it's, it's, it's been talked about on social media. They even created a separate Instagram page called 105 Incidences on Instagram. That spotlight, you know, I saw that the other day, and I was like, wow. So I think we need to revisit on that. Oh, and by the way, we have a birthday tonight with one of our colleagues, Anna Valencia, so I'd like to congratulate her. I won't tell her what her age is, but if we could join in on singing her a happy birthday? Ready? Birthday. Come on, come on. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Anna. Happy birthday to you.
All we know is, all we know is she's qualified for retirement, so congratulations. Wish you many, many more.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Moving on to Councilwoman Rios, Margarita.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Want to welcome you to our council meeting this evening. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending the Chamber of Commerce Networking in the evening from 5:00 to 7:00. It was at Milagro Cinema, and it was really nice. We got a complimentary popcorn and soda, and we, if you wanted to, you could participate in watching a movie. So they played Jurassic Park, for those that wanted to stay and watch the movie. But what was really nice was that there was a group of individuals from our city, business professionals and others, who gathered to make connections, build relationships, and just support our community and business and chamber overall. So that was, that was nice. Over, I also had the opportunity to attend the Independent Contract Cities Association Seminar, which was really, really informational. They talked about different topics that are so relevant, for example, IA and how, or AI, I should say, artificial intelligence, and how that works within our construct of new businesses, not new business, well, businesses too, but city government, and how AI is working within to try to make what we do a little bit easier and technology-friendly. A lot of opportunities with that, come some challenges, but it looks like AI is definitely on the move, and city government is something that benefits, potentially may benefit from that. They also had a presentation on youth in government, which was also a really nice topic to discuss and hear about, and how other cities, Gardena, Santa Monica, how they're addressing, you know, the, their youth and the growth and leadership opportunities. And so that was also, I took a couple of ideas from there, because I know that we're always looking at how do we grow our component of youth and develop those youth leaders? What opportunities and activities do we offer for them to get even more so involved? So that was really nice. I was very grateful for that learning opportunity. The summer concert, we kicked it off at Norwalk Park on July 9. They had a really fun group playing some fun music. There was a lot of dancing activity. There was a lot of opportunity to fulfill whatever munchies you wanted, from tacos to nachos to churros. So that was, that was a lot of fun. Plus, it was really neat to see all the canopies up, represented by different organizations in our city. So we had our chamber there. We had Cerritos College there. We had a realty company there, some of our park and rec staff, and just a number of other organizations that were giving, you know, some freebies to our community, some information, some flyers. And so that was a really good kickoff on, on July 9 for our first summer concert. And one of the things that I also wanted to, to mention is, I know I said this some time ago during one of our council meetings, where we, I briefly mentioned, you know, our current situation, not just in the community, but nationwide, as far as the incidence of immigration, ICE activity in the different communities. And I know that in that statement, I mentioned that I really thanked our public safety for the job that they're doing, because it's not an easy job, but I definitely thank them, both our sworn and non-sworn. And I asked that our community, if you wanted to participate in a protest, or just make your voice heard in some fashion, or in one way or another, that you did so peacefully, out of respect for everyone, speaking of our entire community, I think that's, that's been a positive in that sense, that we haven't had any specific incidences where public safety has been jeopardized. But I will share, at least, and these are just my feelings, because I, I'm one that different community members will reach out to, specifically when one of their family members has been detained. And I think I get that information in those calls, because I, I know people, just as we all, we all know, we all know people in the community. As a previous school board member, I know so many youth who now sometimes are either close to graduating high school, or in college, or plain, you know, plain and simply have family members who are undocumented. We have a fair share in our community, in the city of Norwalk, as do our neighboring cities that have unfortunately had some similar incidents. The last time I spoke, I mentioned human decency, how regardless of where you are on this issue, we need to remember that we are all human beings with the fundamental right to be free. And as far as I'm concerned, if I have any member in my community that doesn't feel free to go to a park, feel free to shop at their local shopping center, feel free to go to work, feel free to be outside of their home, then there is a problem. There's a problem. So I just wanted to share with those that, you know, I was able to contact some of our local legislative officials who offer resources and services for those members in need. I also spoke with Gabby today, thank you to you and your team. Again, the council as a whole agreed that we're doing what we can, doing what we can. And so we increased those services and social services for those families that may be impacted. So I thank my colleagues for looking to see how we can just ensure that our community feels safe, protected, and that our fundamental rights are protected. So I just, you know, I wish everyone safety, wish everyone well, hope you're enjoying your summer. I know I'm trying to. Summer's my favorite time of the year, so definitely trying to make the most of it, and know that as a team here, we are here for you, here for the community as a whole, everyone. That's all.
Thank you, Margarita. Councilmember Valencia.
Thank you. I want to echo the comments that colleagues have made about the Fourth of July celebration. Alan, our Director of Parks and Rec, thank you so much. You and your team did a fabulous job. Public safety, tap, volunteers, everyone involved just made it a beautiful, wonderful, fun-filled event, and I was happy to have gone and participated. We were so close to the fireworks that we had ashes coming down on us. It was like, wow, I've never had this happen. Well, once, in Mexico City, when they celebrated the 200th anniversary of Mexico, they had that, but we don't, they didn't have OSHA and all these regulations like we do here, so it was kind of interesting. But it was wonderful. It was a great event. The fireworks were fabulous. I heard a couple of people, oh, they've been better. You know what? I don't know. With those 3D glasses and everything, fantastic, fantastic. So I think it was, it was better than other times, as far as the show and everything. So thank you. Thank you so much. It was fabulous. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I participated in a training. As, as City Council members, as elected officials, you are sometimes approached by the media. And so Levy, thank you so much, our Director of Communication and Public Affairs, put together a media training, and there was a gentleman who was very knowledgeable, professional, who met with us individually. I met, Everidia did, I think I was one of the last ones. And it was very good insight into what could a potential interview be like. We posed some questions, hypotheticals, and then in the end, we did a mock interview. It was great. It was great, based on, you know, the information that we had and some topics, and I was very enlightened. And I'm used to the media, but you're never used to, you know, what's happening now and all these different issues. And with my topic, I got emotional. It was, it was the immigration and ICE raids and what have you. But he brought me back into, okay, it's emotional, go with it, but then collect yourself, you know? And, and that was very good feedback. So I'm, I just thought it was great training. I think everybody should do it. We should open it up to our, to our commissioners, because they're sometimes, you know, approached by medias and stuff. So that's something to maybe possibly think about, plant that seed there. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, I haven't been at the, I missed the, the first concert, and I think I'm going to be missing a couple. I'm actually going to be taking a vacation. I haven't taken an actual real vacation in a while, and I am going to be going on an African safari. That's on my bucket list, and I'm checking it off. My friend, and, and you all know her, school board member, Norma Mesqua, got that opportunity with the Community Family Guidance Center. They had a couple of years ago, this up-for-bid, and, and little did I know that Richard Legaspi and I were bidding against each other. We didn't know, we were on the other side of the room. And then they said, you know what? Are there two packages that people can go on? And we, and we said, is there? And then they said, yes. So they stopped the bidding, and we each got it. So I'm going, I'm leaving a day before my birthday. My birthday is actually on July 26. I'm very excited. I'm going to take lots of pictures and send them, and we can, you know, post them with our friends and whatnot, but that's a very exciting time for me. And then I just, I also wanted to talk about the, the situation in the United States that we're facing. You know, I was undocumented at one point in my life, at work, many years. And then it wasn't until the Simpson-Mazoli Act, the amnesty passed, that, that we were able to, thousands of people were able to go through that path of citizenship. And to see what's happening now, historically, it's never been this bad. The human rights, the human effect. the human effect, it's being basically just yanked out. And that's what I think scares a lot of people. If I'm, if you're brown like me, and you know, you're Latina, your last names, what have you, you're at risk of being stopped. And I think that's a big fear. But bringing it back to Norwalk and what we've been doing, I'm very proud, my colleagues and I, and and our city manager and assistant city manager, that we passed, that we've talked about, and that we put together a whole, you know, we increased the funding for legal assistance. We've, we've, we've ramped up our social services programs so that we can offer assistance to Norwalk residents who have been impacted. I know, and as Margarita said, she's been working with people, I think all of us. I mean, I've been working with a lot of folks as well, delivering groceries, getting information of names, because some people depended on that nephew, or that son, or that cousin who was working and now has been taken. So how are the bills going to be paid? How is this going to happen? That's, those are the people that, you know, we can try to help. And we've been helping. So thank you, Gabby. Thank you, Ozzy. Thank you, city manager, Jesus Gomez, and colleagues for for doing this, because we care about our community. We care about our residents, and we want them to be safe. We all have Latino last names, and we all have Latino relatives. And and some of us, you know, are at risk, if you will. But as Margarita stated, be safe, be cautious. You know, I know that sometimes we want to go out there and start videotaping and this and that and get in people's faces. Well, there's possible ramifications. But just if you're going to do that, be safe. And of course, report everything. Let us know what's happening, because we don't see everything. But let us know so that we can try and help out as well, because we really do care. And we're here for all of our residents, no matter what, you know, legal status or what have you. And plus, who knows, just by looking at someone, you know? So, yeah, we're going to keep on monitoring that and and also to assist where we can. Right? Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The only thing that I will add about the Independence Celebration was that was a true wow factor. We really blew it out of the park, no pun intended. But it's, I heard from cities, residents in our city and residents around the other surrounding cities, and they know for a fact that they're coming to Norwalk next year. Alan, Public Services, to the entire team, Public Safety, our Sheriff's Department, our Information Department, everybody, it was a team effort. It was a true community representation of what Norwalk is all about. So thank you to all of you. I want to touch base on a few things that are coming up. So this Thursday, our Park and Recreation Department is hosting a planning and design community engagement meeting all around Norwalk Park. So we all know that we've had some changes because of the five expansion. And we are in the process of developing and envisioning what we want Norwalk Park to be. So please go to the Arts and Sports Complex. It's this Thursday from 6:30 to 7:30 PM. And we also have Front Street Friday Nights this week, starting off our very first one on Front Street. So come on out and enjoy being a part of the Norwalk community once again. And then on Saturday, we have dinner and a movie at the historical Harget House. You guys know that there's always so much going on here in the city of Norwalk. And I truly feel very fortunate to be a part of this council and this community. So continue to stay strong, Norwalk. Believe in each other. And as my colleagues have said, stay safe and continue to enjoy your summer and make memories. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Everybody's really kind of hit everything pretty well. I think one of the things I would say about Fourth of July and our first concert, you know, I really enjoyed it. I thought they were really well done. And I guess, maybe being from a former staff member, I think the thing that was most impressive about both of them is that they were both, they were both at different venues than they were last year. So it was like first time up, especially with Fourth of July, where you have so many people, you have so many expectations. And, you know, when you, Rita and Ozzy and Noe can figure out the parking for that whole thing, because that was always the biggest question about doing Fourth of July, Fourth of July there, you know, there was enough acres to accommodate everybody, but was there going to be enough parking? And you guys figured that out. And, you know, it looked like you guys had had that plan in effect for the last five years. It was that smooth to all of us. So it was very impressive. And all the departments involved in it, you know, Public Services, like my colleague said, you know, Communications, you know, everybody's got to work together, make that stuff work. And then, again, concert in Norwalk Park. I was kind of wondering how that venue would work. But once been there and seen it and whatnot, I really liked it an awful lot. And everybody that was out there was having a good time and dancing and, you know, that's the universal theme in Norwalk, whether it's concerts or the seniors' center, or whether it's Vice Mayor Perez, they're just like always dancing, you know? And those are really good. And like I said, it was a new venue, and it was amazing. What I'd like to say is that, you know, I've obviously been paying attention to everything that's been going on in the news. And I think for me, I don't really get wrapped up into it nationally, because I know the people that voted for me live in Norwalk. And what my feeling is, is that I don't want anybody in Norwalk to feel fearful, regardless of how restricted we are and, you know, we're dealing with these federal supremacy clauses and all that other stuff. But I'm just, I just feel good about the fact that, you know, again, Public Safety, Rita, Gabby, Ozzy, Jesus, you know, Levy, I know he's been busy with his stuff, is that everybody stepped up? Because if you can alleviate fear, and that's one thing we can do, is alleviate fear through providing information, if you can provide good information. It's going to be different from everybody, you know? Obviously, Levy's going to have a much better, bigger audience than than Gabby. But I mean, we're getting it out there. And and I know people appreciate it. And and Mr. Ramos, those cards that you had showed me, are those, how are those going to be made available to people?
Thank you, Mayor, for that question. Actually, Gabby Rigolato and her team is responsible for this information card. But we're going to be passing out those directly to our community via our staff. So we'll be able to provide those cards available to everyone.
That's good. And I think, I don't know, I missed part of the meeting here, but can somebody restate what our, about our, our emergency hotline is, what the hours are, what the days are, what the phone number is, and so on?
Sure. We've actually got a couple here we're going to be providing to the residents here today. So.
Yes, if I may add to to your comments.
Yeah.
We developed a flyer.
Oh, great.
In a, in a size that's very manageable, and has the numbers and resources available to residents. We are distributing these to very focused groups, like our childcare, like our seniors, our families, events. And then we also have a smaller card that you can carry with you, but has a QR code, and you're able to get information here as well.
I think that's important, too, that we're that we're pushing it out through the networks we're involved in and and on that level, because people in general are pretty leery of government, you know? I think in a lot of people's minds, because everything's been so confused that anybody can potentially be ICE in their minds. I know some of the city's staff has been mistaken for ICE and all this stuff. So the more informal we can distribute that information, you know, I think the more effective it's going to be. But just for the people that are watching on YouTube, can somebody state what the phone number of the hotline is?
Yes, Mayor Yalla, it's 562-929-5961.
929-5961. Now, let me ask you a question. If they call the City Hall main number, can it be transferred, a transfer from the switchboard to that number?
I'm sure it can.
Okay. And I'm presuming that all the city clerk folks are aware that they can shoot those calls over there?
Yep. We'll make sure they have that number handy and transfer calls as they come in.
Thank you, Teresa. We got the best staff, people, I'm telling you. So anyway, that's that's what my thoughts are on that. We're certainly going to do everything that we can do. And I think, you know, this has been an evolution of events and activities and stuff like that. Now we've got, you know, I just want the public to know that we have been addressing this stuff as much as we've can, that we can on our level from the very, from the very early days. But, you know, there's a question of setting up technology and distributing the information and doing some other things. But at the end of the day, what public needs to know is that all five of us are behind the residents of Norwalk. And we don't want anybody in this town to be fearful. If there's anything we can do to alleviate it, that's exactly what we're going to do. Mr. Gomez, comments, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item was going to be to introduce these flyers to the community, and they're available for them to take at Social Services Center and here at the information counter. And they can call as well. And then next, just wishing everyone a very happy and safe summer. It's like in the middle of it, feels like it's going really fast. So I hope that you're making great memories with family and friends. My next comment is, we have a business owner who has made a very significant investment in our community. And I think he's adding to our venues that provide entertainment to our community. And it seems like it's doing very well. And I want to have Mr. Mutsumi Esparza to come and say a few words, because he does have a surprise for us.
... here to thank you for the wonderful support that your staff, all of the city has provided, Milagro Cinemas. We're about to celebrate our one-year anniversary in two weeks. But we've been here now just about a year open, serving this wonderful city. And I'm very proud to be here and very proud of what we offer. And to express our gratitude, we're going to, with the Norwalk Town Center, donate a hundred tickets to the city for you to distribute as you feel is best for citizens and staff of this wonderful town. Very grateful. We're going to have a couple of free screenings for youth during the month of August. Last year, we had the screening of Encanto. And of course, the producer, Yvette Mirino, was there, who is a homegrown person here from Norwalk. And we're looking to do something similar. We're going to have a whole series of programs to celebrate our birthday. And we welcome all of you, and we thank you for the wonderful support and embrace of this beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esparza. Next, we have two videos. And the first one will be the Independence Day Festival 2025 recap video. I'd like to share this with all of you and the community, those who were not able to attend, wanting to make sure that you pay attention to the events that we offer here in the city. And please, attend all the summer concerts. Here we go.
The Recreation and Park Services Department hosted the annual Independence Day Festival on Thursday, July 3rd, at a new location, Hollyfield Park. The community came together to celebrate with an evening full of entertainment, music, and patriotic spirit. The event kicked off at the main stage with a warm welcome and introductions from the city council. Their opening remarks set the tone for a festive night ahead. Families enjoyed food, games, and community fun throughout the park. Crowds were treated to exciting performances by Kids Talent Academy and a high-energy dance group that lit up the stage early in the evening. The excitement continued with live music from the undercover band that had the crowd dancing and singing along. Capping off the celebration was a breathtaking fireworks show that lit up the night sky, bringing the community together in awe and celebration of Independence Day.
Three, two, one, yeah!
Thank you to everyone who joined us at Hollyfield Park to make this year's festival one to remember.
Summer is here, and so is the music. On July 9th, the city held its first summer concert of the year, and this time at a new location, Norwalk Park. Join us for the upcoming concerts on July 23rd with Blue Breeze, and on August 6th with Soto. On July 10th, the senior center held a Let's Craft candle-making event. Seniors enjoyed working with wax, wicks, oils, and dried flowers to create their unique candles. Norwalk City held a Bark and Brews event at Robert White Dog Park on July 12th. It was a positively fun morning filled with music, giveaways, and coffee. The finance department was on site, providing dog licensing services for those in attendance. Later that day, residents grabbed their togas and towels for an Odyssey-themed Aqua Carnival at the aquatic pavilion. From demigod games to swimming in Poseidon's domain, it was an epic summer quest for everyone to enjoy.
So as you can see, we have something for everyone, including our furry friends. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Gomez? You and your furry friends? We have eight consent items for consideration. Ms. Devois, are there any persons wishing to speak on the consent calendar items?
No, I do not have any cards.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Second.
Row call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Advisory bodies, are there any council appointments to an advisory body this evening? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to ordinances and resolutions. Item 10, resolution number 25-30, supportive of an application for land and water conservation fund grants. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we have a presentation by Mr. Alan Perdomo, and this is a grant application to be, to be able to fund our parks. So, Mr. Alan Perdomo?
Thank you, Jesus. Good evening, Mayor and council. The item for consi-
The item for consideration is resolution number 25-30, supportive of an application for land and water conservation fund grants. Quick background on that, this particular item, the Land and Water Fund, LWCF, grants provide funding for the acquisition or development of land to create new outdoor recreation opportunities for the health and wellness of Californians. Since 1965, over 1,000 parks throughout California have been created or improved with the LWCF assistance. The LWCF is a current competitive grant program for both local and state agencies under the California Department of Parks and Recreation, DPR. The LWCF provides funding for acquisition projects or development projects. Examples of acquisitions may include the creation of a new park or the expansion of an existing park. Examples of development may include those for outdoor recreation, and many include, but not limited to, the following features: athletic courts, fields, dock parks, picnic areas, outdoor trails, and aquatic features. The deadline for the application is August 5th of this year, 2025. The local agency maximum grant request is $6 million with a match requirement of 50%. The Recreation and Parks Service Department will be applying for the LWCF grant program. The application process requires an approved resolution from the City of Norwalk City Council. If awarded, grant funds will go towards the Norwalk Park expansion project. As you can see, there's actually a picture of our second community engagement meeting that took place on Saturday, June 28th. And like you see in the slide in front of you, we had two meetings on the 25th and 28th of June. And like I was mentioning earlier in the meeting, we have our final meeting this Thursday, where we're going to present the final concept based on the feedback that we received from everyone that attended from these two meetings. In summary, the recommended action, we asked, staff asked the council to adopt resolution 25-30, resolution of the City Council of the City of Norwalk approving an application for land and water fund conservation grants. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions the council will have.
Thanks, Ellen. Ms. Devois, are there any persons wishing to speak?
No, Mayor, I don't have any speaker cards.
Okay, council, questions? Yeah, go ahead.
All right. There, I've been receiving some calls about different parks, but specifically Hermosillo Park. Six million is a lot of money. It sounds like a lot of money. But I know that materials, building supplies, what have you, very expensive, right? But some of the concerns that I was posed with are, I know that some of the parks are going to be redone. Hermosillo is one of them because of the water project and other things. But the concern is that some of the courts, like the basketball court, the little area for the kids to splash in, you know? What is that called, the splash? Splash pad, thank you. The splash pad and the handball court? I think it's a handball court or something. That those are at risk of being removed and not brought back? Is there something related to that? But, and then that brings me to some of our other parks. Those are big draws to some of our, you know, our youth and adults and families in general. So when, when I hear that, oh, those are going to be removed and not being replaced or what have you, if they're being refurbished or what have you, that I can understand. But completely removed, it's a little bit like, wow. So if they can be refurbished and not removed, that would be ideal. Instead of just taking out and then, you know, bring back just a field. That, you know, that doesn't draw a lot, or that doesn't serve a lot of our families and whatnot. But I'll let you speak to that. Thank you.
Definitely. You're referring to Hermosillo Park. So as we work on the design of that particular park, we had to make some very difficult decisions when it comes to what features are in or not. As the council is aware, the grant was given to the city back in 2018. And in current day, 2025, the cost of the project has skyrocketed. So myself with our engineering team, and I'm going to call them amazing because we've done some magic to really find additional funding sources to still make this project a realistic project, we had to face some very difficult decisions. Some of those decisions is, we have to maybe temporarily not add some of those amenities because it puts us over budget. And unfortunately, what we ended up doing, we have a strategy behind it. So where currently those amenities are going to be placed, we're leaving them as just open space. So during the next construction phase of the project, we will identify the funding source, and then we can put those, those features back in the future. So it isn't a permanent no, it's just a temporary because unfortunately, there's so many other costs with the park as, you know, when you start designing a park, many unforeseen things come to light. And many unforeseen things came to light. So unfortunately, the project is, is very, very expensive. But I can probably talk to the city manager and maybe give a more detailed presentation to the city council on this item. But we are doing outreach as requested through California State Parks at our Front Street Friday, this Friday, and our next concert event. So I will be there informing the community and hearing from them on these, on these issues. But it was not done without much attempt to try to preserve those elements.
Councilmember Valencia, if I may, for Hermosillo Park specifically, we prioritized the hall. It is going to be a 200-capacity hall for the community for rental. So that was, when we first began, that was a priority, and keeping the soccer fields. So those are the, the main priorities for, for the community. And I can share with you that we, we have value engineered the hall, but it'll still be for 200 in roundtables. So that's, that was a priority. As Mr. Perdomo mentioned, we do have the space for those additional amenities. But once we get additional funding, we'll, we'll put those in, in place.
So, not to debate, just as a follow-up question. You said the second phase of funding, and, and I know those are great, trying to get the funding, and I'm going to reach out as well to see, you know, where we can. And as council members, we know other council members that, hey, you know what? There's this grant, there's this money available. Sometimes you hear about it, you know, work together and get connected and whatnot. But when are we talking about? When would be the hypothetically, the second phase of funding?
That we're not sure of? What we're sure of is that the project will take about two years to construct, the way, the way it is now.
We said maybe November to start? Is that still a slated date?
November, the month of November. We're, we're focused on doing a groundbreaking in November of this year.
Okay, all right. Keep us posted.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ellen. I know that at a couple of meetings ago, I asked about, to get us a current update on our Parks Master Plan. I know you said that was coming. When do you think, that's my first question. When, when are we going to see something, an update to our Park Master?
I will speak to my neighbor next to me, Mr. Damian, and try to get something in the calendar for the City Council within a month. I'll try to look at the forecast and try to work with the city manager, put something within a month.
Councilmember Rios, I'd like to propose that we finish the outreach for Norwalk so we can actually have a master plan as part of that entire plan for the parks. Because we're, I think this Thursday will be the last, right? The last community meeting? And so we would have, I'd encourage us to be able to bring back a, a plan for Norwalk Park that the community has had input.
Oh, okay. Yeah, um, thank you. As someone who loves parks, and you know I love our parks, I, I think that it would really be, it makes sense to kind of compartmentalize that a little bit. I'd love to hear what the input was, number one. I want to hear, what was the community, where did they come, what was their input, what was the feedback? You know, because I think that's important. I think that's only one component, though. And the, the master plan, I guess I'm, my follow-up question is, to the master plan, are we, is staff just preparing some of the parks? And if they are, and which parks are they going to be? So number one, I want to hear what the results of the survey was for Norwalk Park. You know, the outreach that we conducted. Number two, what parks is staff, will staff be ready to provide an update on? Norwalk, Hermosillo, is there any?
We can provide on all 12 parks.
Okay, that's my, okay, you will?
Yes, yes, because we, we've improved almost every park in one way or another. Some already have LED lighting on their baseball fields. That would be an update. So we'll give you each park and what has been added and improved at that park. So we would, we would do all 12 parks.
I think the updates have come to the council, which is good. We've kind of, over time, we've gotten some of those updates to the park, to the different parks and the work that's been done. So that's great. But I think that we, we, I would like to see us get to a point where, when we're talking about Norwalk and Hermosillo, just to use those two as an example, where are we going with the parks? Because I know we've looked at plans, it's been a while. It sounds like, Ellen, now because of maybe some potential budget constraints, there may be some modifications to that. So I guess I would like to see, you know, what the current plan is, you know, for, again, just using Norwalk and Hermosillo. What is it? And what are we prioritizing? Because as we get to a decision on, I'll just use Hermosillo as an example. I can't, I love, anyways, I'll, I'll use Hermosillo as an example. Knowing that we have budget constraints, knowing that there's a timeline, and it takes, you know, it takes quite a while to sometimes get some of these things done. Knowing that we're going to have to do maybe renew our outreach for Hermosillo, knowing that we're going to do, we're going to be seeking potential funding. What is going to be our priority so that the plan doesn't continuously change? You know, if you can identify for Hermosillo Park, three things, like this, three non-negotiables. The council wants one, two, three. Those are non-negotiables. I think it would help staff as a guide to, okay, well, we know these are the priorities. That's what we're sticking to, and that's what we're going to make happen. Now, four and five, as nice to haves, okay? We'll see if we can get those done in the future. But I think that staff would benefit from a guide, one, two, three. Those are non-negotiables. Those are a priority at Hermosillo Park. Because otherwise, we're going to go back and forth. Well, we, we were going to do this, but we can't do it now. Well, no, staff needs to know what are the priorities? So that, that's where you focus your energy on, right? What do you think about that?
We can, yeah, we can definitely present to the council and hear their thoughts. At this point, we are almost at 100% design of the project. So we know those are in the sense of cost. The elements that we removed are the lowest cost. It will be hard to supplement a splash pad, for example, a building that's multi-million dollars. So, but we can share that information. I'll work with the city manager's office and present something to the city council, and we can provide an update on that project and all the parks.
Because I know with Hermosillo, the priority, one, was the soccer fields. We all agreed on that, right? It's like, that's, that's a non-negotiable is a soccer field. But as we talk about the other, oh, and the, the...
The hall.
The hall. Those two I know were non-negotiables. So it's like, okay.
And the playground.
The playground, too?
Yes.
We just redid the playground there. No, we're going to get another playground?
Yes, that was a priority.
Or replace existing?
That was a priority to, to have a playground.
Okay. So then where does the splash pad and the handball court and basketball, basketball court? Where does that fit in to? And, and that's why I ask, because I'm all for the playground. I think, you know, we did get a newer playground just recently at the park, and so, yeah, I mean, it's to figure out, and it just gets more expensive.
We could have an Hermosillo presentation, Hermosillo Park.
And Norwalk Park, too.
Right, that would, that would follow, so, let me see if I can explain this. So Hermosillo Park is, I'm going to say 100% designed. We could bring that in August.
Okay.
And we'll give you a timeline of outreach, groundbreaking, and construction timeline.
Yes.
So that, that one's 100% designed.
Okay.
The Norwalk Park, we can come back and we can give you a presentation on what the outreach has looked like, and we can also provide you with the feedback that we received, and then show you a picture of what the community agreed to.
I, I know I for one would like to weigh in on what the playground is ultimately going to look like because that is feedback that I get from our, our residents is, you know, why only one swing? There are no swings, or, there's a lot of different playgrounds out there, you know, at different parks, and I just occasionally look up to see what's, you know, what's hot right now in playgrounds. And I think that we can do a little bit better with the playground. Like I said, I don't mind going out and reaching out, you know, asking for money. Do it.
I'd like to add something to this. You know, as, as we create this Park Master Plan, right? What the community's input is valuable, but on a professional level, sometimes it may be practical or unpractical, right? So my suggestion was, I don't know if we have a design company or a design consultant that specializes in modernizing parks that you can consult with so that we're not wasting time, money, and energy? That maybe sustainability is an issue, you know, the way the sun comes up from the east, that's in the west, positioning of different structures and amenities, modernizing some of these facilities because technology evolves. And, you know, you guys are doing an amazing job with recreational programs, but you may not have the expertise in the design and the engineering of these amenities at all the parks. So, you know, maybe put out, I don't know, consultant to come and, and be like your guide, your go-to for design, so that we're maximizing.
Yeah, we're actually working with, the City Council a couple of months ago approved the design, planning and design agreement with David Volz Designs. They're one of the premier landscape architects, I would say, in Southern California. So we are working with them. And they are currently doing Norwalk Park Master Plan. They're also going to be doing Hollyfield for the addition of 15 acres that we own possession, and for Robert White Park. So they're doing those three master plans. And they're all, and they actually did the original Hermosillo design that was awarded in 2018. So they've done some good work for the city that has delivered on grant funding.
Yeah, because once, if we do that, you know, we're going to maximize our money, our efforts, and have the longevity of these facilities that last 40, 50 years down the road, right? Rather than having to come back and redesign and reconfigure, and so get ahead of it. So that would be my suggestion, if that's the avenue and direction that this council wants to go.
And, and as a follow-up, since you mentioned the consultants, what is the approach by staff on just, you just keep with one consultant? Are we given an option for another, a different consultant, just to see someone else's creativity when we look at another park? Because I don't know if I would use the same consultant for every park. Is that, it just seems like there's so much creativity out there that I've seen, and I, I just don't know. What, what do we base that on? That's one question. And then the, the last question I'll ask is, when we have these community outreach, you know, events, which like I said, I'm very in favor of, what's the expectation? Because as Councilmember Ramirez said, you know, I, as a resident, can ask for the moon and the stars, but I know it's not practical, and then I'm disappointed. Wait a minute, I gave the time, I showed up, I gave my feedback, and nothing happened. So I think there really needs to be a good understanding explanation to those that take the time to give us this feedback. I hope that there's some parameters that they're given to work with.
Yes, we, we use different design firms. For example, Hermosillo, we're using Raisin Construction and the sub is well done engineering, so they're doing the design for the park. We're currently working on the Hollyfield Parking Expansion, and that's RKAA, I believe. But we use a different multitude of landscape architects. We did put out an RFP for this, so there was a very competitor, but we believe this was the best architect, based on their experience. They, they designed some beautiful parks that, I'd name those parks, you would recognize them. So I think they've done really good work. But we do use, we do use multiple different architects for different projects.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, and Vice Mayor Perez?
Thanks, Mayor. Ellen, I think as you can see, when we start talking about our parks, we can go off in 20 different directions. But really, tonight, you're only looking for an approval on a resolution for you to apply for a grant, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, so I will make the motion to move that.
Roll call, please.
We went off, we went off. You get it.
For the record, we all love parks. We all, we all do. It's, it's, it's not, it's not just, yeah. It's just not, Councilmember Rios, we actually all love parks. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez?
Aye.
Rios? Valencia?
Valencia. Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Yeah, right, it all starts there. Okay, item 11, Urgency Ordinance Number 24-1753-U, 10-day report on the moratorium to establish, implement, or operate temporarily or permanently convenient stores, liquor stores, discount stores, personal use, laundromats, vehicle, automobile, washing, payday loan establishments, emergency shelters, single-room occupancy, supportive housing, and transitional housing citywide. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Alex Hamilton will present.
Thank you, Mayor, and honorable council members. Tonight is the 10-day report, as we call it, which is for your consideration as a receive-and-file only. The next few slides have some, I think, some very important background to explain as to how we got here. It's important, I believe, for the community to understand the path that you, the city council, took and what it's led to, and, and its outcome, which I think is, is gonna be a very good outcome at the end. So in accordance with Government Code Section 65858, the city council took the following actions to date. On August 6th of 2024, you adopted Urgency Ordinance Number 24-1752-U, which was valid for 45 days and was to expire on September 20th of 2024. On September 3rd, 2024, you received and filed the required 10-day report prior to considering an extension of the urgency ordinance. And on September 17th, 2024, the city council adopted Urgency Ordinance Number 24-1753-U, extending the urgency ordinance for an additional 10 months and 15 days. It's set to expire on August 5th of 2025. The next slide has the uses that were enumerated in the ordinance that was originally adopted. I won't read them all. I will emphasize that in addition to the housing-related uses, which included emergency shelters, single-room occupancies, supportive housing, and transitional housing, there are a number of other uses that the city council directed staff to look at and study, and, and I'll give you an update on that in a minute. There was also important to note that baked into that urgency ordinance was what we call a waiver process, which meant that any use that was identified in this urgency ordinance could petition the Director of Community Development, the Planning Commission, and/or the city council for a waiver if certain conditions were met. So I wanted to make sure that the community understood that that was always built into the ordinance that was adopted by council. So again, this is a 10-day report. We'll come back on August 5th of 2025 with an extension on the moratorium for an additional one year to initiate a zoning text to allow city, the staff to study the uses identified in the ordinance and initiate zoning text amendments for future council consideration. But to the background, it's, and this is critical. The city had an approved homeless plan approved by the county in 2018 and 2023. In 2021, the County of Los Angeles and the State of California closed Hotel Saddleback at 12505 Stone Boulevard as part of Project Room Key without regard for city or community input. And then when Project Room Key was closed, the individuals housed there were without an exit plan. So the wraparound services were nonexistent at the time. Currently, the County of Los Angeles received a $52 million encampment resolution grant in which Norwalk was included. As part of that grant, Norwalk requested that persons experiencing homelessness at P E H not be located at Hotel Saddleback, the same site as the site of Project Room Key in 2021, and alternative sites were provided. Despite the request, the County of Los Angeles selected the same hotel, Hotel Saddleback, in Norwalk for a two-year transitional housing program, again, with no exit plan. This is what led up to the adoption, city council adoption of the moratorium. So given the poor performance of Project Room Key in 2021, and without regard for city or community interest, again, with the recent county encampment resolution, the funding program, the council directed staff draft an urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 65858. That's very important background for the benefit of the community as we go forward. As a result of the outcome of the adoption of that urgency ordinance, on October 2nd, 2024, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, we know them as HCD, revoked the city's housing element compliance. We had a 2023 certified housing element. On November 4th of '24, Governor Newsom and Attorney General Rob Bonta filed a lawsuit against the City of Norwalk for violating numerous housing laws. We had a, an original trial date scheduled for August the 19th of this year, 2025, that has been extended to October 28th of 2025. Now, there is some good news to, potential good news to report on this. The city attorney and the city attorney general have been discussing with the council's direction a resolution without litigation, so we're hopeful that we can avoid this litigation. And while we extend the moratorium for those other uses identified, and I'll cover that in a minute, without the housing unit, so the, the housing uses, so the ordinance would be, would come back to you on the 5th, minus the residential uses that the state had issue with, but included, including the other uses. And as a result of this, the state has committed through the Attorney General's office to recertify our housing element within a certain number of days, which is certainly good news for the city from my perspective. So the, the next steps are, on August 5th, staff will present a one-year extension of the moratorium without the housing-related uses for your consideration and adoption. The plan after that would be, once you adopt that ordinance, in late fall of 2025, we'll come back to you with a report on proposed text amendment changes and regulations and development standards for the other uses that were identified in the urgency ordinance. That concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Alex. Council, any questions? Okay, hearing none. Item 12, Resolution Number 25-31, Approving Agreement for the Elderly Nutrition Program for Fiscal Year 2025 and '26. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Daniel Brago will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Okay, thank you. I'm here to discuss Resolution Number 25-31. This is for the Fiscal Year 25, '26 Elderly Nutrition Program. Background, the Los Angeles County Department of Aging and Disabilities oversees the elderly nutrition program. This is, department provides the funding, grants, and subawards for both congregate and home-delivered meal services, which enables us to support our older population effectively. In fiscal year 2019, 2020, the city and the Aging and Disabilities Department agreed to collaborate through a direct agreement to achieve the city's objective of effectively serving the senior community. And in 2023, we switched caters and we started an agreement with Trio Committee, and this is one of the reasons our numbers have increased. The city operates two congregate meal sites located at the Senior Center and at Social Services Center, where seniors can gather and enjoy daily hot meals in person. Currently, we're serving around 200 seniors at the social, at the Senior Center, and at Social Services, we're doing about 50. Our actual roster for the Senior Center is 1,330 applicants. But any time we can have that many people show up. At the, at Social Services, the clientele is 322. But any time. Now, mind you, that these people come in are not just Norwalk residents. These are actually people from other cities also. Our centers have become popular because of the atmosphere, the food, and all the activities that we do. In addition, we do provide 225 meals to those who are homebound. That's a straight number, 225 every day, five days a week. So as you can see, we've served well over 120,000 meals for the year. Our recommended action, staff recommends city council adopt Resolution Number 2531, a resolution of the city council, the City of Norwalk approving agreements with the Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department for the Elderly Nutrition Program Fiscal Year 25, '26. We also recommend to approve a subaward, ENP 2526-06, with the Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department. This is for the full grant of $1,221,800, excuse me, for the fiscal year 25, '26, and to approve an agreement with Trio Community, that's our catering service, for $700,000 for the fiscal year 25, '26. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Danny. You guys really do some great work. I think that's one of the programs that I'm really proud of, because there's not many cities that have full-service senior services and full-service social services, and have the facilities, right? I mean, our facilities are great and the whole thing. So I'm glad to see that we're continuing, continuing the program. Council, do you have any questions?
Mayor, I don't have a question, just a, just a comment to add on. When we were elected, you know, in 2017 and 2020, a lot of us had gotten comments about the quality of food, which took into consideration taste, the size, et cetera. We, you guys did some great, some surveys and got some great feedback, and this contract is a result of that. And we've increased it quite a few times because of what you mentioned, the popularity of the seniors coming into the Senior Center and to Social Services. Praise and comments all the time for everything at our Senior Center, and I, I really appreciate everything that you guys have done back in 2023 to bring this new revised tasteful program to our community, and glad that we're going to be able to continue to offer that.
You know, since 2023, our, our numbers have increased 81%. Yes, we started off with about 120, 134, now almost double that. It's been a big jump. Thank you.
Congratulations for that.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I am, you know, I teach, and so it's hard for me to get out there, but whenever I get a chance, I, I try to go and I have lunch with our seniors and just, you know, break bread and have conversations. I just want you to know, this Friday, I will be going, and I plan on going, if that's okay. And just, you know, enjoying what they enjoy. And I gotta tell you, the food is really good. I, you know, the, there are some, there are some, oh, I was, it didn't have chili, it didn't have enough salt, or this and that. Bring your own chili, bring your own salt. My aunts do that, you know, I have family that does it. My, even I have friends, I brought my serrano chilies, all right, anybody wants some? It's funny. But, but overall, it's, it's very good food quality, and it's, it's well-balanced, which is wonderful, because you don't want all Friday, all, you know, all mushy food. So I look forward to Friday and joining you.
Hope to see you there, and we invite everybody to come in at around 10 or 3 o'clock to join us for our afternoon moving groove. Come dance with us for a while, come dance with the seniors.
Moving groove at 3, huh?
So now that Ms. Councilmember Anna Valencia has reached the required age, she can officially participate.
Councilmember Pramires, I'll remind you that you are considered a young senior also. We're in the club, my dear, we're joining the club.
Danny, what is, what is, what is the age of participation at Senior Center?
Sixty or, sixty or older is the contribution to eat there. The Senior Center itself is 50 and older. So I, I can go there, I can sit there, in five years, I can have lunch with my seniors.
But I'll, I'll also join you for, for lunch on Friday. I think I'm available.
Just, just.
As long as we are able to bring our own spices and chelitos and whatever to spice it up.
Danny, just don't.
As long as we don't see them, we're good.
Don't let the, don't let the dietitian know that, that the city council is smuggling salt and jalapenos to the, to lunch. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll second it.
Yeah, a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. Valencia. Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Item 13, Amendment Number 6 for the Supportive Services Program Agreement Fiscal Year 2025, '26. Staff report, please.
Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Daniel Brago will also present.
Good evening, again. This is for Resolution 2532, Fiscal Year 25, '26 Supportive Services Program Agreement. The background, the City of Norwalk and the County of Los Angeles Aging and Disabilities Department have worked together to provide a supportive services program to seniors in the Norwalk community. Through this county-provided grant, the Senior Center has been sanctioned to provide critical services by promoting and maintaining independent living for seniors. The operations, the SSP program assists seniors with in-home services to help and maintain the quality of life. This, this is homemaking, personal care. If there's seniors who have somebody who's veteran and they have to take care of, and we do respite care, where we will step in for a few hours so they can step out. The program serves 50 to 75 seniors per fiscal year. Just really depends on how they qualify. And then seniors must be 60 years of older and reside in the City of Norwalk for this. The program services consist of homemaking, personal care, respite, registry and case management. Case management is the actual one-on-one work that our caseworkers do with the seniors. Those can lead up to several days of work, but it is rewarding for them. The in-home services are provided by in-home workers experienced in working with older adults. We actually vet the applicants that come in. We make sure they, they pass a background check, and that they're first aid and CPR certified. The recommended action, staff recommend city council adopt Resolution Number 2532, a resolution of the city council of the City of Norwalk, authorizing the city manager execute an agreement with the Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department to fund the supportive services program in the amount of $78,202 from fiscal year June 2025 through, I'm sorry, July 2025 through June 2026.
Thank you, Danny. Lizette, are you here? I got a speaker card. It says Oral Communications, Social Services. All right. Then, Council, any questions?
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have Oral Communications.
Hello, my name's Lizette, and good evening, everyone. I'm here today, I wrote social services, just generally, just because I think, you know, the city is doing awesome with the rec programs and all the programming that we have. But I think something that maybe we could improve on, and I think we should improve on, is. is our stance with everything that's happening with immigration that makes it really hard for, you know, our neighbors, our community to enjoy these services and to get outside. Just recently, yesterday, I don't know if you all heard, but a Norwalk resident was taken from outside their home, and their children were watching. This person had a seizure outside their home. Whoever it is waited outside for them, outside the hospital, and then they took her. And this is a Norwalk resident that many of us know. And so, you know, I think we could really look at what other cities are doing to denounce these actions and do more on our part so that, you know, seniors, parents, other people can actually enjoy all of these services that everyone is working hard to get approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I come to you more than a month into the continued attack on our neighbors and family from Trump's Gestapo. Two weeks since I last spoke in front of you, and your continued inaction is amazing. In these two weeks that have passed, we have had continued kidnappings, a raid that resulted in the death of a farmworker trying to avoid being taken, and a supposed show of force in a center of Latino community meant to instill fear and obedience. In this time, other cities have continued speaking out for their residents, established discreet funds for the immigrants in their communities. What have you done? The recent spending bill means that ICE is now going to be the most funded federal law enforcement in history. They will now have more funding than almost any other country's military. Only 15 countries, including the U.S., spend more on their defense departments than we spend on ICE. They've been given 13 times their current budget just for detention. Where do you think they will find the people to fill those concentration camps? Just last week, it was announced one of those masked thugs was arrested in Long Beach for carrying concealed weapon and assaulting a police officer amongst various, under other charges. This all started because he had followed a woman into a restroom. Because he had been unmasked, he was linked to the violent detention of two citizens on separate occasions in Pico Rivera and Montevideo. These are the people we have running around our city. In Sacramento, two bills, the No Secret Police Act and No Vigilantes Act, have been proposed to help keep our communities safe. Other cities and local governments have already submitted letters of support. Why haven't you? Thanks to a coalition of community organizations, a temporary restraining order was granted to try and stop ICE from racially profiling and snatching people for how they look. At least eight other cities have joined onto this lawsuit because they realize the importance of ensuring their residents' rights are respected. Why haven't you joined? There is so much more that you can be doing. We need leaders who are prepared to fight for their community, stand up for their residents, and stand up for what's right. If you aren't ready to do that, then why are you on those seats?
My name is Destiny Vargas. Soy una hija de inmigrantes. I'm a child of immigrants. My dad, born in Mexico, raised me as a single father. At one point during my childhood, my dad was a day laborer, occasionally taking labor-intensive jobs while raising his daughter. I am a child of an immigrant. Between June 6th and now, there have been nearly 2,800 enforced disappearances, nearly 2,800 families, many like mine, who have been torn apart. I'm asking for the City of Norwalk to stand up for its immigrant residents by signing on and passing a sanctuary ordinance like our brothers and sisters in Huntington Park. I'm asking for the City of Norwalk to prohibit the expenditure of local resources to facilitate Trump's mass deportation agenda absent a judicial warrant and judicial probable cause determination. The attacks on Norwalk residents by immigration enforcement agencies for the past month have instilled fear amongst community members, disrupting their ability to live freely and safely, to enjoy the resources that our community has to offer, to enjoy the parks and these restaurants that you're here talking about now, and bringing your chiles and serranos and jalapeno peppers that our farmers are picking. These sanctuary policies ensure that immigrants can access city services and resources. More is needed from the City of Norwalk.
Yes, this says junior. Do you have a junior in the house?
Good evening. It has been two weeks since we have made our demands for the North City Council to pass tangible ordinances that will protect the residents of Norwalk. Where are they? What will it take for the city council to pass common sense policies that will, at the very least, make it difficult for ICE to act with impunity and disregard for the Constitution and due process? What we are asking for is not radical. Cities like Huntington Park, Monobello, Pico Rivera, Santa Monica have all shown that it is possible to push back legally with various policies. And those same cities, among others, have joined the lawsuit against the Trump administration, seeking a temporary restraining order on ICE. So again, I ask, where is Norwalk? Is it because ICE hasn't operated as visibly as they have in other cities? Just yesterday, as the other community member mentioned, there were reports of ICE kidnapping a community member by TAMS. Regardless of visibility, it is still happening. Is it because you agree with how they are operating? Are you waiting for a resident to be killed as a direct result from ICE raids like in Camarillo over the weekend? Or do you need residents to take to the streets like they did in Paramount, Bell, and Whittier? How much chaos must occur in order to take this seriously? It's time for you to show us if you stand with your constituents. With that, I will reiterate some community demands. Condemn the operations ICE has been conducting in our city. Include Know Your Rights literature on city property. Introduce an ordinance that requires federal agents to identify and unmask themselves. Start a fund for community members impacted by the ICE raids. Your silence comes off as complicity. We are paying attention, and we will keep coming back until ICE is out of Norwalk. Thank you.
Next, we have Norwalk resident.
Hello. I'm here again as I was two weeks ago. Nothing has been done additionally. I wonder, when I look around, I see a Valencia, Perez, Ayala, Rios, Ramires. There's a statue of a Mexican man outside, born in Mexico. I don't see you guys doing anything to stand up for the Hispanic community here. The migrants are most vulnerable people in this community. Some information for you guys. Migrants now are no longer eligible for bond hearings. I don't know if you guys saw that news that passed today. What that means is they're going to be able to be detained for the duration until their case is closed, which can take years. So every day that we wait to do something is we're putting people here in this community at risk to be subjected to that. $45 billion were allocated to double the detention capacity that we currently have. And in these detention centers, there's a voluntary work program where a study from UCLA graduate students found that those migrants earn a dollar a day. 91 days of work in these detention centers equates to $91. If they were making the California minimum wage, that would be $10,920. So think about that. That's over $10,000 that they would have had if they were making just California minimum wage. And it's called voluntary work, but when these detention centers are missing basic care items and sufficient food, it's not really voluntary. They have to fill in those gaps with the work they do. And the type of work they do, they're exposed to hazardous chemicals, no PPE. Some further numbers for you guys. A four-ounce can of tuna equates to three days of work for them in those detention centers. Tubalino is half a day's of work. One pair of underwear is 40 hours of work. Other cities have done a lot more than we're doing in Norwalk. Monobello, $100,000 fund. Huntington Park, $150,000 fund. A sanctuary ordinance that bars collaboration with immigration enforcement that is not backed by a warrant. It protects information of all residents, including their immigration status, from being shared with any federal agencies. And it includes transparency for the residents, report when there is contact with immigration authorities, and establishes a private right of action for individuals whose rights have been violated. We need to see you guys do more here in Norwalk. We're going to keep coming back until you guys do some.
Teresa, we have any other cards?
No, Mayor, those are the only cards I have.
Okay, we're adjourned.